I'd like to welcome everybody to this special meeting of the Del Rio City Council. And I have a little call page.
Councilmember Louie.
President.
Councilmember Hallack.
Here.
Councilmember Randy.
Here.
Councilmember Sterling.
Here.
Mayor Donaldson.
Here.
Commissioner Getzold.
Here.
Commissioner Amadi.
Here.
Commissioner Creager.
Here.
Commissioner Panay. Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Jack Shaw.
Here.
Chair Hayward.
Here.
Please join me in a large meeting. The next item is public comment. They don't want to help with comments, must deal with matters subject to jurisdiction of city and council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda, they do so now. There is a three-minute time limit for each speaker. And no asking will be taken on matters brought up under this item, and all comments will be referred to staff. Are there any public comments? Okay, any other public comments? Next item is new business, that's the only item that we have today. And that's to receive a presentation on the amendments to the sixth cycle housing element based on the comments from the state housing community development. Receive testimony from the public and provide directions on policy and programs for the sixth cycle draft housing element. And with that, I'll turn it over to the.
I'm Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, Mr. Chair of the commission, members of the council and commission, thank you for the opportunity to present again regarding the sixth cycle element. Today, we have a presentation that's related simply to the programs and the revisions that have been made in the programs. I wanted to remind everybody that the identified in your staff report, the was considered for ninety-day review after thirty-day public review at the local level. There've been over a dozen, I think, public hearings. At this point, we are now at the spot to consider program changes as well as consider the draft, second review draft for HCD. This will be the third review draft that the city has seen. There was a May twenty twenty three thirty-day review draft that was considered. We received public comments on that. There was also the July HCD first review draft. And that was a public comment period as well, required maybe twenty fifteen, ten-day period. Right now, we are looking at the second HCD review draft, and we're also looking at the deadline of December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to adopt and submit to HCD. So our objective today is to let you know where we stand. Today, the earlier, the HCD second review draft is posted on the city's website. Both the November ninth, November fourteen, and today we'll be, we'll be seeing the programs that you've seen before that are revisions. Those were also included in your staff report. That was part of your staff report, has been on the public site. At the agenda locations and stuff. So I think today, rather than have a big presentation, we're going to have as much of a dialogue as we can, like to be able to see whether or not the planning commission, the council okay with the program revisions that we've submitted. And I want to go over also, you know, what we did in terms of amendments to changes based on HCD's comment letter. So there's sort of a two-part process for today, for tonight's meeting. And looking, considering the basic staff, staff report is probably the element that we're going to be looking at most. So with that, I would like to also see if there's any additional people in the audience that would that are, that that are going to weigh in, it doesn't look like, again, it's important for us to identify that we have had numerous public hearings, numerous opportunities for public review, numerous opportunities for people to weigh in. The city has done a very robust job of public outreach. And we are now at the spot where it's time to consider the revisions and move it to HCD for their another review. Although we'll be recommending the adoption of the HCD second review element next week, we will also understand that we'll come back with comments. But we do want to make the deadline that's been provided. So I think, I think the first step really is to ask the council commissioners, would you like me to go through some of the changes that you made in the HCD comment letter and highlight those, those major changes? And then we can talk about any program questions that you may have or changes on the programs, whatever. Okay, thank you, Mayor. So first and foremost, let me pull out the letter. The HCD letter identified a number of different revisions, as is typical from HCD, from the draft review and that was submitted in July. And they looked at this, there's a number of different review revisions, but also they based it upon, here's a requirement, here's state law, here's what you need to do, here's state law, here's what you need to do. So the first thing that they identified under the HCD review letter was review revision. Consider the appropriateness, effectiveness of programs that you've had in the last housing element and the fourth. And how have, how have those been effective? Or what have you not been able to do? What can you do? What are your accomplishments? So I'm not sure HCD actually looked at Appendix E from our last half of July. But we did a robust change to that because I feel that there were more elements of change and accomplishments that we could identify, and so we did that. So that's in the new Appendix E in the housing element that's posted on the weather. So basically, what we did is we identified a bit more of what was done and what wasn't done and why. And that's in response to this first comment coming from HCD. I think that essentially does address that. Then they talked about what's the housing needs and resources and constraints in their HCD letter. And that's in accordance with another state law, so identify the state law, and it's affirmatively furthering fair housing. So we identified element complies with fair housing law. They just wanted to ask, identify how the city does comply with some of the enforcement issues. And that was added. They also wanted us to identify more, because the city is in an unusual situation, it's in populated area, though it doesn't want housing tract, and that housing tract, a census tract, excuse me, doesn't have as much robust information as all the other HCD housing elements that they need to see. We had a hard time saying, okay, this is specifically, specifically, specifically what we can identify. So they asked us to identify more local knowledge of why we're saying what we're saying in addition to that. You know, what about schools, emergency programs, things like that. So luckily, we had a consultant, had a lot of local knowledge. So also, we spent a lot of time with, you know, with the planning commission and council and talking to people, so we, to the extent that we could, we also explained to HCD that, you know, this is already in, in interval into the housing element. There is a section called sites and affirmatively furthering fair housing, which we added to the housing element. There's a specific law that says you have to identify how you're integrating sites that you've identified. That full analysis will be added, that analysis that's in both AFFH and we also summarize that in the discussion of sites on chapter three. Contributing factors is a major issue that HCD wants to identify. Basically, they want to hear under their affirmatively furthering fair housing assessment. What are the fair housing issues? And what contributes to that? So we added a section at the end of the housing element, AFFH, that identifies the, you know, some of the primary fair housing issues that we've heard through the process and that are obvious in our analysis. Affordability, not having any locations where you can provide housing, updated zoning laws, and needing to update the zoning for support areas, if you have areas for disability. So those are other specific categories that they've identified. And the fourth, I don't know if I can remember, is, we'll get back to that. Oh, you're the identification of being able to do smaller, different unit sizes to be able to contribute to affordable housing. And so that's what we heard, and those are the primary ones, and also avenues by the data. So that's a big section that has been added. They also wanted to make sure we knew that extremely low household income is fifty percent of low-income, so we added that, that's and some overpayment items regarding cost burdens households. It's interesting, but from the housing conditions that the, from HCD standpoint, they couldn't understand why we didn't have more impacts or issue areas with housing conditions and need for rehabilitation, which they typically have, and we did, we had to explain to them that there are not many houses or any within, you know, that city that have had, you know, issues related to building permits or falling down. That type of thing. We did a whole windshield survey, meaning we had one of our staff drive up and down the city to, to give them the evidence to show that that was issue, and that's what they wanted. We added more information about special needs housing, special needs groups, really based upon, we have the the population of the city is elderly population, higher elderly population than other peninsula and moderate county, so they will be moving into special needs. People with disabilities, also a special need, and extremely low-income households, special needs, so we added more information about that. They had a specific request on identifying items by parcel under the sites inventory. This, one of the, two of the sites are larger than ten acres, which they're used to seeing. They want to make sure we have a policy to address large sites. And specifically in terms of the sites inventory, which is, they talked about infrastructure, how do you make sure that you have the infrastructure? So we added more information about in chapter four, environmental and infrastructure, specifically to HCD's request on water. Met with city manager and talked more about Lake Water District and their Kenan Will Center, that Kenneth Will serve letter that they have, the city has, and added that information as well. The city also, HCD also wanted us to ensure, we had a specific policy about how will you be removing constraints? So we added to the water program to ensure that there is water available upon developments, and what are your steps for infrastructure? They wanted to put the city notice that we, that we should have a program that identifies how will you also remove a constraint, environmental constraint of remediation? So we added a program on that. Talking about DTSC, we tried to evidence the conditions and mitigation from EIR, which both DTSC and the Army thought were adequate for removal of those areas that are new health remediation requirements. And then we emphasized that there is a hundred acres, over a hundred five acres that do not require remediation. That we added more information about accessory dwelling units. Well, in terms of they, one of their comments was, you know, the city ordinance does not meet current state law, I think the city ordinance adopted in twenty-one and new current law in twenty-three now means we're going to adopt that. They had a question about, we identified twenty units of ADUs over the next planning cycle, eight years of being able to be developed, and they questioned that. They said, how do you know that it's going to be twenty units? You have, so we re-verified those numbers. We've had information from the very good spreadsheet that the city keeps on a regular basis and had actual building permits, and then they identified which ADUs, by which value would be applied for, would it be low-income, moderate? And so we think that we've addressed that. We'll probably come back and ask for more, but we also included a program that was recommended, addition to an ADU program recommended by HCD to do monitoring, which you do already. So we can monitor that those units are actually being built. And in the last, I think, twenty twenty-three, I think there's five ADUs in the pipeline or approved or few built, so it's really a difference from when we even prepared this report in May to now in terms of the number of ADUs. So I think that we have more than sufficient evidence to go that there's going to be out of the number of ADUs to be arena. We, we adopted a, city adopted an emergency shelter ordinance, which which I think has, is adequate, but there's a, they had a comment as to whether or not we should we said it to them before, in June, they said it was appropriate, adequate on that state law. But the letter said that, look at it again, and they may be sent revisions to that, that we added a program. We'll be happy to do that. And then there's a really more interesting discussion relative to, other than just some cleanup on manufactured housing, which we've put in there, and the ADUs we talked about. There were some questions regarding, how do you deal with land use in your zoning? And so, you know, they would like us to reduce the limitation of use permit or permits on some of our residential uses. And, and looking at the zoning ordinance, we, again, we looked at it and said, and it said that there's actually a use permit required under that for a single-family home, although it's allowed use. I think for in part one, yeah, part two, so that really does need to be corrected. So we've identified just a number of different corrections for that in chapter two and chapter four. And those are under land use controls. They, I think we've talked about this before, they want us to require smaller bedroom types to provide fewer parking spaces because that's considered a limitation, which is part of what they call in the conference, the zoning code update, we're keeping track of those. The app, it's for more information on fees and exactions, to make sure it includes all of the regional fees, which it does. Any other program about timing of adopting a fee program already in there. Design review is another sort of potential constraint for development. They may come back with more on that. They would like to see whether design review is optional and how this, but they use it for the number of other jurisdictions are, is definitely design review, and they would like to make sure you limit design review to three meetings, that it's done as a designer view or planning commission model, and doesn't get up to a higher level, and that doesn't preclude housing. There wasn't much change in there, but it's a review of the zoning code to determine whether or not there's some constraints under the design review process. So we talked about the governmental constraints. Committing to making some changes, which have already been in the zoning norms, or in terms of the zoning code, regarding transitional housing, supportive housing, reasonable accommodation. Talking about they wanted to expand approval times. If the city's ever had any lesser density requests for development, but don't know there's been any requests, it's pretty easy. And then there's a specific set of comments and questions on the housing programs, which is really our next discussion. So maybe stop here and see if anyone has any questions on anything that they just talked about.
What I'd like to do is I'll start with the planning commission first, and on the left with Commissioner Jack Shaw and Karen Work to the right, Commissioner Amadi, and then I'll end with Chair Hayward. George, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions.
What did you input?
Well, one, one piece of input, yes. I appreciate that you proved this process. And Mr. Mayor, it would be exciting for me to get into the details rather than just going over the presentation, so thank you for that. I know that there's been a variety of efforts to address different issues that have come up, and appreciate that as well. I was wondering, and that's just a matter of curiosity, and I wanted to take your brain as the planner, consultant person, as an outsider. Would it be worthwhile to eventually look into that well that we have that's done in the market? I don't know anything about it, but I'm curious about it. And I want you to know your opinion as an outsider.
I would like to stay on the subject.
Okay.
And I think that city manager could give you more insight on that.
Okay.
But we're really talking about, you know, what we, so two parts here, what, what the changes were. And we do have a policy that talks about pursuing elements of any water, so I think that's covered in there, but it's a tactical first program.
Yes.
So I will refer you to the city manager.
My only question is, have you done any Christmas shopping? Thank you for trying to get all this back to them, get them off our backs. We know they'll be back, but thank you for making the effort.
Thank you. I'm sorry I'm here so often.
Sure. It looks to be like twenty twenty-five, because you visited.
Yes, yeah. I'm glad we changed all those twenty-fourth and twenty-five. I am. I, in response to that, I have, we have a chart that we're putting together. We're going to meet with the city manager on this week on Monday to identify where all the timelines are, and then see if the city may want to elongate some of these elements. It seems like it is just way too much for any small city. There's, there's some that haven't been able to accomplish. It's very similar to other jurisdictions, larger ones as well. But I think that putting the timeline on it that we know we can't make is probably, you know, something that everyone has mentioned, and I think it's reasonable to elongate some of the timeframe. I would like to suggest that there are some that we have in the last planning program that we're going to keep including the reasonable accommodation, transitional supportive housing, state law updates that we can get done in shorter time periods, and we've already developed a couple of these ordinances, so toward that approach. Thank you for mentioning that.
That's it. Okay. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Denise, for the reservation. And I also thank everyone who are here with us tonight, and I'm just glad that this really housing element of ours is something that is getting formed and and it's getting there, it's almost there, and then thanks for all the help of Denise, and also our suggestions and our input and insights as well. And, and right now, during Denise's presentation, I mentioned about certain special needs group. And I really like very appreciative that we included the seniors and also the people with disabilities in our community, because that's really like what we're seeing, the bulk of our population here. And, and I know that certain groups have also like greater difficulty in finding affordable housing. And, and, and because due to their pressure of concerns or needs and circumstances, and, and I was like thinking like those people, like for example, people with chronic illnesses. And, and also, because sometimes these people, they may have chronic illness, they, they don't qualify for disabilities because they can't still be functional, but then still they are sick, they are, they are really like like experiencing some unique needs that, that probably that we can address in our housing element, so that they can be catered for. And I know it's, I'm not afraid that we all have chronic illness, but if you're going to have those, it's just unfortunate, and if ever we can help something like in our housing element or program, or maybe we can have a program to add some housing needs, but that, for, for this type of, of our, of our residents here in, in Del Rio. And also, I'm also thinking, we have a bigger population who are in the military in our city who are even still serving and also veterans. And they may have as well some house, unique housing needs. And they cannot probably afford some like housing in our city, and then I don't know how we can help them in this regard. And especially the, we have a lot of military installations here, and we're in the middle of the heart of the peninsula, and we're all surrounded by government agencies here, where the veterans and our military are serving. And that's one thing that I'm thinking is we can include them in our special needs group in our housing element. And I'm also like thinking, of course, we have a lot of schools in here. We're also in the middle of, you know, we, we all know, we have DLI, we have NPS, we have NICE, we have CSU, MD, and we're all in the center of all these institutions. So maybe another special needs group that we can think of would be the students. Are, do they have certain housing needs that are different from, from the other groups? So I'm thinking of them as well, and, and of course, maybe we also have like people who are in the LGBTQ plus, and also people of color who may have unique special needs or challenges. And if we can probably have some programs for them, or even just, just helping needs assessment, and how we can really like address their concerns and also help them. In our housing element, I'd agree that we appreciate it. That's all from me, Mr. Mayor.
Denise, would you like to address?
I'm ready. Would you like to go through all of the comments?
Whatever works best for you.
I feel that we can, we have many programs already addressing special needs groups. We definitely could add information about students and include them in the special needs group. We've got the data isn't quite there at the city level, but we can identify that they are special needs, including military. And, you know, anyone who's living here hopefully will benefit from the ability to, you know, have better programs and more forms for, for housing. So, and I think, yes, I think the AFFF page does already address, yeah, different communities and integrated, and we've also heard comments before about making sure we integrate rules together in Del Rio, so I think it may be covered, and we can add this back over to the room there.
Thank you for what you do. So it would be very helpful even listening to those group of people who will be mentioned and will be describing a housing element. Thank you so much.
And then we, just to note too, as part of Appendix B in the housing, that we have a matrix of people's comments and how they're addressed, and then and written comments and verbal, so it's new, it's Appendix B one, I think. So you can see, you know, what, what has been said, for the most part, we get the major comments. And then how it's addressed, so we can, I think if we now, next week, we can add its comment and how it might be addressed already, and then add information to the back screen.
Okay. Time to move to Hallack.
Mr. Mayor, I actually, thank you, W and associates.
Very lovely.
For all your diligent work on this, carrying us forward. I have a few questions. Now referring to the amendments and latter parts of what we have here in the staff report on page fifty concerning how is it worded? Decerations in housing for homeless populations, something to that effect. And there's language about responsibilities being periodic counts of homeless population, so of course I'm going to rephrase this. Is that number derived from, now of course, now, I mean, I've seen some reports, is that number now derived from a potential bed count, head count of those facilities? Or is this you know, more simply a bushwhacking, looking to convince a homeless population here about I know for the capital city of Mar-a-Lago, it has a task force that go down into the homeless, homeless communities. And it takes the, um, how will that work for our city? How would you write it?
Thank you, um. The homeless has a point and, there's a homeless point in time count that occurs on an annual basis. That was reported in the housing element. So the idea would be to use that data and report on it and program before. Um, and then also we, the idea would be to just also prefer with the food supply in the city and the city. So, um, there's no, uh, it, it's not a correlation between the homeless built emergency shelter. Uh, or, or that because we don't have the shelter there though. How would I answer that?
Yes, thank you for satisfying my curiosity. That's, uh, very generous to answer to it. Um, if you could just briefly expand on, there's language to adding within twelve months of adoption, six cycle. Uh, safety and environmental justice elements. Safety to me and most likely to the rest of us, seems pretty solid, planet work. And I've done a little research on the environmental justice element, he's applied elsewhere, but why can't you see that as? Uh, city specific for Delaware, I'm just moving forward.
Thank you. The, um, safety element is a required element of the general plan. Here in the city's last safety element was done, um, quite some, some time ago. So there's a, a corresponding law, state law that says when you adopt a new housing element, you should also update your safety element. Um, the idea behind that would be to use, there had been emergency shelter, uh, emergency management plan. There are safety elements from other jurisdictions, so we would try and encompass that potential work that's already discussed. I think it's discussed in the EIR, how now the EIR, and in the housing element, um, now there's available data. So that's the rationale behind that, and it was also identified a number of times during the cycle. Um, and then the environmental justice, um, is also one of, um, sort of requirement. That someone had, uh, one of, I think that the previous mayor had specifically identified the one in the fifth cycle. So it came, we hit the, coming back in the sixth cycle, so hold over from that. Um, and, and environmental justice, um, specifically for housing elements. Uh, I think it's more in terms of that, you know, uh, that you're not impacting one needs group, one group over another. And that there's justice where you're identifying, where you're placing, you've had comments about where you're placing housing for the housing, things like that. So it's, um, that's the, that's the rationale behind it. Um, and there's also some requirements to adopt the environmental justice program.
Okay, thank you. And that'd be great segue to, and answers in part my final question. Um, so again, very comprehensive, and this appears to go along, satisfy state mandates, uh, public comments. Uh, those put forth by the commission and city council, um. We, uh, I mean, uh, most of it is summarized on page thirty-six, our, our housing of goals. Uh, and all throughout, we, uh, we've identified, um, inclusionary housing, equal opportunity, housing, equal housing opportunity. I can say special needs and persons with disability, even residential, uh, preference for city residents and workers. And of course, uh, varying income levels. One point of concern that has been mine for several years is, uh, explaining, um. God of my role and envisioning power, community, my continued shape, um, moving forward, particularly with newer development. If anybody happens on the corner of the road, yes, um. And, uh, we've heard many public comments to this point, and actually, like, Mr. Shirley brought it up again, uh, at our last meeting. Is, uh, essentially the desegregation of any, uh, socio-economic conditions with any newly developed community. Um, so basically interpreting varying, um, income levels within the same. Close proximity and in proximity to the same resource, with the same amenities, the same width of the streets, the same landscaping, uh. Accessibility of parks and public transportation, uh, the aesthetics, the architecture that they live within, um, anyone involved. Um, so I don't see, and correct me if I'm wrong, I may have read through this pretty, pretty quickly. But no specific language that details any desegregation or integration or. Interpretment of. The list of, uh, housing goals that we're trying to. I don't know, it's just a couple of examples come, come, come to, come to mind, uh, locally. Two and a half decades ago, there was, uh, the old JCPenney building between the guy versus pal and Alvarado. They turned into a garden, of course, about twenty percent had to be affordable housing. But they stuck them in, the affordable one was this, uh, whose crying dealer hate, yes. Basically a club that was almost unusable square. Another example is, uh, Pasadena, uh, off of sixty eight. Uh, yeah, it mansions all cozy next to the golf course and each other and little pristine neighborhood. And then the casquitas are kind of tucked up on the back end against the fence with the noise of a good mistake or. Mazda or whatever, we're going to say, or recently, you get my point.
Mm-hmm.
So that sort of, uh, segregation, I, I think I'd just like to, yes, avoid any, any kind of links that are. Really, you know, project housing. We've all seen nationally and historically, the complications that surround that sort of thing, um, in short term, in the long term. So that's something we'd really like to avoid. So my question is, is this something that I should even be speaking of at great length right now? Uh, or is this realizing, of course, not at project juncture now? But there is language that, uh, this, you know, in actual private planning stage. That there would be housing strategy and negotiation with, uh, city manager in this process. As to how that will all look. Is that some sort of language we should include in this housing element? Would that be beneficial? Or would it be a occurrence perhaps, an attractive element that might, uh, deter potential developers? And have you seen this in other cities? Have they included it or have they avoided it? And so on and so forth. I think you see where I'm going with this.
I will take one, one of those points, questions at a time. I think the one that I heard at the end, the two that are at the end, is that this is the right time to talk about, yeah? Is it appropriate to include it as an additional part of a program? Yes. Is it also appropriate to consider at the time of future development? Yes. We have heard what's, and it is in the appendix B in terms of the comments that are received, but it didn't. And it's in the, um, AFFH, appendix A, appendix A. But I don't, yeah, I think we should take another look and see if we can focus it, uh, because we've heard it. And I think it's just a common form objective. Focus where we put it, uh, into a program specifically so that any future developer or any, um. And the, the HCD is aware that these are the city's desires. I think we can accomplish that, uh, presented next week with just a minor change. Um, to work during the, uh, with the city manager to do that. If you have any specific language, yeah, I mean, no, we can briefly definitely put it out there to look at. Thank you. But I, I, I do think that there are some examples in other housing elements or other programs that we bring up there. I think that answers all your questions.
And lastly, rehabilitating components that you touched on, as someone who's frequently underneath the houses here in our local town. Tearing out cast iron bikes every year, we'll give you some more, but we'll see how old that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, until I have.
Okay, vice chair.
Yes, um, thank you Denise for all of your work, um. I, I, you know, I didn't realize, well, I, I should have realized, but I didn't look through the entire element. I just read the staff packet, so, or the agenda packet. So I'm anxious to read all of your entities and things from there, um, words to, to look at that. So, and, and in what he's, I see a reflection of our comments in what you've done there. And, and I see you addressing the letter, so I, I just want to thank you for that. I really appreciate it. Um, there's the teacher in me that sees the paper, so I'll tell her later.
Thank you.
And, so I, I just, I just have a few questions, and most of them are just kind of logistical. Um, about the program on page fifteen, um, talking about the housing vouchers. I know they're trying to spread out the work, um, across multiple years, um. But in terms of housing vouchers, it seems as though, I'm exactly just reading. I, I guess I don't really know how those, you know, how can we incentivize, um, a, a land, you know, someone who owns a home. Providing it, um, as affordable. And so I was just wondering, I think that's in the, um, what, what incentives would be used? And then, um, I'm curious why, why we need wait until twenty twenty five? Is there a lot of work that needs to go into creating incentives for housing vouchers?
Probably that.
Right.
Um, so we don't really know. It's not an expertise that we have now. And we're very small, very patient and. And then, as, as has been mentioned a few times tonight, uh, there's a lot in the housing element program. The implementation of this housing element is going to be significant. And so, um, what, what I'll need to do with Denise's help, uh, is once we have this ready to go. Probably after we get the HCD further, then review. Uh, it put together some sort of matrix of everything that we put in this document. And what's gonna, what it's gonna take to implement it all because. House and T's appointed and our in-house, uh, bandwidth appointed and the number of. It, it's gonna take resources and it's gonna take consultant help, uh, to implement this type of work and trying to figure out what the time comes from, uh. With everything else that we do in the city, uh, it's gonna take five, that's okay. These, these dates that we put in here, uh, I think, uh, Commissioner Armani can notice that we've been pushing some of this stuff back, thankfully. Uh, but, but some of it's gonna have to be pushed back further, something, you know, so when I was at the county. We adopted the general plan update in two thousand and ten, so it was thirteen years ago. Um, they've implemented probably ten to fifteen percent of the programs, thirteen years in, they're acting through their title, um, in general. So, uh, it's a big undertaking, and so we're gonna have to figure it out.
So HCD doesn't have any problems with that, setting this out throughout the?
No, eight years, wait, eight years cycle.
Yeah, eight years, sorry. Um, in terms of ADUs, kind of going back to that topic, um. How, how do we monitor the affordability of, of ADUs? Um, and, and here, I think this is how will we, I, I say, how will we ensure that adequate, uh, capacity, changing levels maintained meets cities' room and needs?
So, uh, thank you, good question. The, um, monitor of affordability is based on, sometimes look at on land, uh, values, the, like the property value of the area. Uh, the location and, um, the building permit cost. So how much are you putting in?
Uh-huh.
So, and then the, um, yeah, in other jurisdictions, they have sort of a finished base over, you know, typically it's extrevent very low. To kind of look at it from a local angle and, and see what might be appropriate. And the city, the HCD did question the amount of, um, ADUs that we put in the, the very low. Um, it was based upon if there was just, we had a metric, basically, if you have less than X thousand, ten thousand dollars. And put less than twenty five thousand dollars, you know, into the thing, the building permit. That may be, uh, you know, reason to put it at a very low. I think we're gonna go back and talk to HCD about, we could move some of those numbers around. Um, but that's the approach that we're using, you know, sort of local knowledge, uh, value of building, of, of crewman. And, um, understanding what they use could be for, for, for making them, they provide it, and, um, yeah.
Can you use housing vouchers for ADUs, like, I mean?
Back to the property, I guess, I think.
I believe so.
All right. Um, let's see, uh, in terms of, so I'm sorry, of then annually, um, there's a requirement to monitor ADUs. That's in for agency three, so that's how, and if it doesn't need a certain amount at a certain time, then we do some incentives. I see incentives for building more ADUs, right, all right. All right. Um, let's see. In terms of, um, back to the CD element and environmental justice element. It seems as though there is a mismatch in terms of time. We say we want to update that within twelve months of adoption of the second cycle. But in the program, we said that we would, um, adopt them by fourth quarter twenty twenty seven.
Which probably take long, okay, yeah, I have to little monitor that, okay.
And I don't think I've ever seen a safety document. I didn't even ever have one, so. That process. Um. They. Yeah, and, uh, again, getting back to, um, council member Hallie talking about rehabilitating housing. Talked about how we're gonna identify two households that we'll reach out to by the end of twenty twenty five. How, because we, we have guidelines for, um, how we choose those two?
Um, no, I think that also relates to try and find funding for them as well, not just pretty happy. And there was conversations before about, well, how do we, you know, how we reach out and do this ourselves in the community? Um, so I think that came through, I think it's probably out from the, it's the same as the last government. Put those numbers, I know it is intricate and it's such a tall number. I don't know if it's two annually or, or two overall. Um, because it wasn't clear in the last time I was programming, so I mean, this is the time to identify. If you want to try and say it's two annually over the year cycle or two over two years or something, that would be the time to do that. Um, but we only identify it if there's a need and, um, the way that that comes up is locally. Uh, building inspector, knowledge of, um, enforcement issues.
Okay.
And, um, uh, community knowing neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, I read it that we would just reach out, do right on kind of, and then maybe we're done.
Well, I think that's a good point. I didn't comment on that when I'm leaving, let's HCD.
Yeah, me, me.
So, uh, uh, I think two annually or. There is pleasure of that number, you know, we don't know if we can meet that because there hasn't been one every two years. By annually.
Does it look simple or, uh?
Okay. All right.
Yeah, that's fine. And I guess, um, my last comment is back on water. You know, I know we, I have on there formalized rain coast water agreement, um, priority for waters, reform of waters, through waters. Kind of then by the end of twenty twenty four, in order to facilitate development of two hundred seventy housing units. Um, I was just wondering, what, what does that look like? Is, is this, are we reaching out to rain coast water for a more formal agreement by the end of twenty twenty four? Like, what is this?
So essentially, uh, there's a couple of methods. Uh, the city has reached out and does reach out to rain coast waters on a regular basis. Um, and, uh, one, there is a canon rule, third letter that the city has been provided by rain coast water district in the past. The city also has a, an agreement already with rain coast water district. So because of concerns raised regarding the sixty one sixty, uh, and memory units. Um, the, this is related to, uh, appease HCD. And to formalize that there are steps to move forward to ensure there's a, a water available at the time of development transfer. Um, when you do, when you actually work with rain coast water district, I mean, have larger development. So it's called a water, uh, assessment that's prepared, and I've been, city already have one for the previous developer. And then a water verification report that's, um, that both approved, both of those are approved, approved, watch by verification. Um, both of those are approved by rain coast waters. So they're actually saying, here's a water, which they, they did approve a watch by assessment already, here's the card. Um, and so they do not have a water verification.
That would be the next, yeah.
It's a little bit of a river, and the developing comes forward. So those are the methods by which you show that there's water available. So those are the methods by which you show that there's water available.
So you mentioned that we would have to do that after, after talking to the developer.
Yeah, I think, yes, you would wanna do that once you have it, because the water supply assessment identifies, here's my water demand factors, here's my development. And here's how we, you know, here's what the amount of water that we want in the area. But we could try and do it as a, you know, as a city, um, you know, without a developer. Um, because we have one and we did reach out to a consultant to update the water supply assessment and that could be something, could be done. We talked about that before as well.
Right, yeah, right, right, part of the, part of our comfort. Okay, that's it for me, thank you.
Alright. Thanks, Greg. Thank you Denise for all your hard work, you know, this has been a long slog and it seems like you're getting close to the top. But, you know, um, just kind of going through all this, I don't have any specific questions, but it seems to me a lot of it is. Is just policy revision that HCD is just kind of going, you, you did a good, you kind of got it, but we need to kind of tweak it a little bit. Uh, and I was going to hear, noticed a lot of the, the comments highlighted. Uh, I, again, I think you guys have done a great job and I think we should be able to wrap, hopefully wrap this part of it up and get an end review. And then we get backed up, but we're leaving next week, I think we'll prove some more stuff, so, yeah, great job, thank you very much.
Thank you, that, that is the plan for next week, we're hoping to get a recommendation to move forward, you know, to try to make your considerations. If you wanna hear about them, um, if not, we'll hear that there's some stuff to move forward, if we have a little for next week, so we can have a short meeting next week.
I didn't say that.
Okay Denise, thank you for, for your hard work, um, one of the things that. I feel with, with this process, it's, a lot of us have been at this for several years now. And what, what I love to see in the housing element is. Kind of the DNA of planning commissioner or pla- planning commissions and councils of past. That over the several years that, uh, comments have been made and. And, you know, we've modified it, I, I, I see all of those things that have been included. And I really appreciate all that work over, not just for, for this one, but over, over the years and having that input from so many different people. Couple of things that jumped out at me, uh, I like the consistency in clarification that we, uh, included in there. With S P thirty-five streamlining the process and also, uh, reducing the, the parking requirements. That, you know, as everybody knows, that was a, a new legislative mandate that, that came in, and I'm glad that, that, that's been blessed. But also I appreciate the analysis that you did with the ADUs, you did those twenty included in the numbers, cause essentially it put this down to two fifty. Out at the, uh, four word property, uh, because we've got two hundred and seventy that we need to meet and, and that allowed us to essentially do that. I did have a question, page fifteen on preferential housing, and I know why we put that in there. Uh, talked about comments from previous councils and, uh, my fellow council members also touched on it as well. And, and I guess my question is sort of, the city attorney, it, it says in there a program before. To the extent that such policy can be legally implemented, um, I, I like what we're doing with this, but what. Challenges do you see going forward without actually implementing what we're trying to do?
I'm interested in the question.
Yeah, so we put in there that we want preferential housing for Delrayo's residents and workers, and we also mentioned in there. Preferential housing for teachers, and as part of that says to the extent that such policy can be legally implemented. Because I, I can see where, if you're a non-teacher, non-Delrayo's resident or worker, that it could be considered discriminatory. So from a legal standpoint, what do you see as the challenge of being able to implement stuff like that?
Just, just what, what you said there, I think that this is something that would, uh, that there would be a better chance of attaining. Uh, on the city-owned property to some sort of development disposition through the, by which the developer agreed to. Uh, reserve a certain number of units for those, for those, uh, people that are identified, uh, in program B four.
And he said, so you, you're, you're thinking that it, it, being able to implement that. Um, would probably be easier than in the city-owned property, um, do that in a way that's developed. Okay. Okay, thank you. And then also on page forty-six, we talked about water. Uh, I think one of the things we can add, we mentioned that the city has representation on the N one W board. We, we also have representation on the water management district, so that might be something that, that you can, you can add in there. And vice versa, we talked about the, the formalizing, it says in there that we will formalize it, uh, the agreement with Marina Coast. I, I'm not sure, and, and based on your comments Denise, that we, we need to formalize anything with. Marina Coast, it's already essentially has been done with the will serve letter and the analysis that's been done, so I, I'm not sure if. Maybe the language should be changed that we, we, we already do have, we already have formalized that agreement with them. And is there anything that would prevent us from putting that, that language in there?
I, I don't think so, I think we have it in the documentation, but we can, we can add the information regarding, it's in chapter four in the housing element now. Um, we have, um, so I'll, I'll work with city manager on that language. Um, I think what HCD wanted to see is that, what are your steps to get to the development? And so they want to show that we're doing that, if we already have it done, it's not, it doesn't hurt us to have it in. Um, but I understand what you're saying, and so I will, um, work with city manager on, um, language on that.
Okay, and I, I think that would be helpful, because I know a lot of members of, of the community are, are concerned about the water issues. Uh, and, and to have that language in there, I, I think it clarifies it a bit more. Uh, and, and gives a better understanding that we do in fact have a formal agreement with the water purveyor.
Okay, I can see the confusion on that, so.
And then, uh, lastly on page fifty-four, um, we talk about incentive programs with, uh, with PG and E. Um, although I think we should include in there, on boards with big CD, they also offer incentive type programs, so it just, you can add them in there as well. Okay, and with that, we have a couple of members of the public, I would like to offer the opportunity, if there's any public comment on anything that you've heard. Uh, that has been presented today, so I'll open up a comment.
Thank you, do you stand for this, you're seated, go ahead. Thank you.
Seated or?
I appreciate it, thank you. Uh, Denise, thank you very much for your presentation for all the weeks before and today, it's much appreciated, a lot of, a lot of input. But a couple of things that I just have a couple of questions on, I heard through the presentation just reference to emergency shelter ordinance. Now, is that something, I've never heard of that. Uh, the only emergency shelter I've ever heard that was, and I'm going back to the sixties, was that the Monterey post office had downstairs, that was emergency shelter. And where we could get in there, I guess, that would be it. So, I mean, is that something we're mandated to build or have, or could we use a moose lodge, or how would that work? Or is that actually something that's gonna be mandated? I have a couple more questions too.
Okay, would you mind just putting your questions forward and then I'll respond?
All of them?
Yeah.
Sure. Also too, the, uh, there's reference, uh, from a councilman Hallak about the, the homeless population, I'm curious about that. So is there gonna be some sort of, uh, voucher or something for the homeless population to have some of these units? And if so, and that leads to another question I have about, uh, vouchers, and if so, who pays for this voucher? And is that, is that also from the state, or is that from the county? Or are we gonna be, uh, are we gonna have to pay for a voucher? That's gotta come from somewhere, I don't, it sounds like it's not even the words, it's just talked about. And I guess my last question is, is, you talked about the ADUs. Now, is there gonna be a cap on the ADUs where you can't go up a certain amount? Or is it gonna be what the buyer can pay, I mean, what the renters can pay for the market values? How's that work as well, those are my questions.
Thank you, so the question was related to emergency shelter ordinance, and does that mean that we need to have open, do we have, is it a mandate to have an emergency shelter ordinance? Similar to the old post office, alright? Um, and actually, emergency shelter ordinance is mandated by state law to have, um, an ordinance that identifies where, within this, each city in California. That there would be, you would have a site, not a site specifically, but you'd have a zone or a location where emergency shelter ordinance would be able to be built. Um, it doesn't mandate you to build it, it doesn't mean that you're building it, it also, that just, it doesn't limit you, it's requirement under state law, like state. But, but, but that's the bonus or other law. And, um, so the city went through a protracted process and adopted an emergency shelter ordinance, and that's the reference. Um, in reference to the homeless population and vouchers, using the vouchers, the homeless population discussion was related to, it's required under state housing. For the housing element to identify, here's your homeless population, that was our discussion, and that's it. Housing element under chapters two and four, and it's a special needs group, you will also in the, affirm, um, appendix A. Um, you're not, uh, that, the voucher is a different program, it's, the voucher program is identified as, um, something that's already run by the housing authority in Monterey County. They have a voucher program and they mandate, it's not mandated, it, um, you don't have to give it to a certain group. Um, or not, it's, property owners may, um, as owners and, um, they rent through the housing voucher program, and then they receive a substance. And the, and the renter receives a reduced rental fee.
Is that part of section eight?
Um, so. It used to be called section eight.
Okay.
Um, and then the ADUs, there's no cap on the rental of ADUs, the city doesn't have a rent, a rent cap for that, and it isn't proposed.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the public comment. Okay, what I'd like to do is bring it back to the planning commission, if there are any other last minute questions, comments from, from anyone, yes?
Um, first of all, you all have computers, you're talking about pages, we don't, and so the page numbers you're using were not. In conjunction with what we have with hard copies, so section numbers work better for us, we have the page numbers. So, um, section. Program page one. At the bottom, or at the bottom of the page, uh, provisions of California code section. Uh, one, two, three, four, bullet, the last line. It's the, you know, seven dash six, it says sites, colons. The, the letter O and allow one hundred percent residential use, I'm confused, but we're saying. That is a typo, um, it's, it, it is the, the state law, um, and it talks about, um, on these sites, you have to have fifty percent to be for lower income. Uh, must be accommodated in sites that are designated for resident, residential use only, or on site zone for mixed uses. And, um, or on the very low, very low income housing need mixed use. Um, so if you have a mixed, if you have a mixed use. The second, I think this is just missing, I think the second story is required to be a hundred percent residential under mixed use. And, um, I'll check that to make sure I get, it came from the HCD comment letter, so we probably have it right. Um, and I think it's just a cut and paste issue. Cause it says, the, the, it talks about residential use, fifty percent of the total full area of the mixed use project. Um. Is at least fifty percent of the lower income need must be accommodated on sites designated for residential use only. Or on sites known for mixed uses that accommodate all of the very low, low income housing need. If these sites, colon, allow one hundred percent residential use and also require residential use to occupy fifty percent of the total full area of mixed. So that O is just, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, uh, it's definitely.
It's checking, we really, right, just for the, yeah, for the public.
It's helpful to know that the HCD comment letter would been, you know, is on the public website, and so we will make sure we correct that, put it in. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from any of the planning? Good?
Yeah, I would just comment that, again, back to the timelines, I think it's a good idea that we relook at that and think about under promising mandates and over delivering. Um, actually accomplishing things.
Okay, you want else, when, with these changes, is there enough time to get this done before next week?
You made me busy, but.
Well, I, I think it might be helpful just to identify the changes that we talked about, something on the corrections, I don't think it's a problem at all. Um, I'm just gonna go through the mayor's comments first, you know, adding large, it's a water management district on the water element of pay as an ADU. Adding free, free CE, not a problem, taking the language on water to formalization, we'll make sure we figure that out. Um, I didn't see a change on the comment regarding, um, the, uh, B four and B seven, B seven is actually state law. Um, preferential housing for employees, so that's, if water can see it, I don't see a change of that. Um, the, um. Identification of, um. I think a lot of these were questions, not necessarily action items, um, so I didn't see a change that I heard from Commissioner, um. The council members clearly accept that we're going to be identifying whether that, um, is biannually for E two, brother E two. Um, and I think we're changing, I was looking at the date for adoption and the CD element, final justice. Um, we, um. There's some typos, I'd like to identify those, um. I think we're gonna add something regarding, uh, council member Hallak talking a little bit more about the, um, in terms of the. We have, and things important to note that there's old pipes underneath the houses, things like that, cause we really haven't identified that before. So that's really good local knowledge, um. Uh, we also really, uh, think that probably the biggest change is really just trying to find a policy or program where we identify. Um, we don't wanna have any desegregation, we wanna inner spheres, we wanna have everything together, it very much already in all the comments that have been raised before, but. That's probably adding to the program, so, you know, I think that won't be a problem. This doesn't have to be the perfect program, uh, language at this point, but we wanna include it in. Um, and I think for the most part, um, on council member UO, we, uh, we did talk about, and something regarding the students. And the military, uh, we can't do a lot of analysis, new analysis on that, but, um, we could see if there could be a paragraph or two. Uh, I do think that we already do talk about special needs.
Stu was, that's in here.
Okay, okay, yes, we did that, and that's very easy.
Add a military, military.
Yeah, gotta go, um, yeah, and, uh, let's see. Um, we already talked about really looking at the, the base, especially the manager. I think I caught everything, um, and thanks for identifying any typos, just done the even.
Anything else from planning commissioners?
Thank you very, very much, yes. So what I'm hearing from you is that the programs as we, as written, as reviewed currently, will be, you know, with the changes that we talked about. Will be what you're gonna see on the next meeting, uh, for consideration of adoption and send to HCD to be able to, uh, do that and meet the deadline. Um, so that's what we're due for, and, um, there, I think maybe just, there's a two-part meeting next week. Where planning commission recommends to the city council an action, and then the state council adopts it. So it can be. an action and then the state council adopts it, so we can be prepared to that. It looks like probably, um, Alex will take us through that. All right, thank you.
Okay, um, I will allow the council, if you have any additional questions or comments. Yeah, and Denise, I appreciate you taking us through those items one at a time, uh, you know, with modifications that that needed made before the next meeting, I think that's very helpful. Um, because I think that direction is where we want to go with that, and I just wanna we we don't need to to take any action today, but it seems as though as a council, we're all in agreement with those items that Denise just commented through and the modification. We, okay. Okay, so with that, thank you once again to everyone, and we stand in journey.